Okay, Ashley, can I have roll call, please?
Melby. Melby.
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Here.
Briggs?
Here.
Cavalier?
Here.
Kressel?
Here.
Clatt?
Here.
Ved Breton?
Here.
Okay, it's time for the open forum. If anyone would like to address the council on any issue not already on tonight's agenda, may come to the podium, state your first and last name and address, please. If there's anyone here regarding, uh, street improvements, you'll have your chance to speak when you're at the street and the project number is called at the public hearing. Thank you. Hearing none. Chad, anybody on the phone bridge?
Uh, no, I will close.
Thank you. We have, uh, two presentations tonight. And we'll start with the Cub Scouts presentation, please. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. I'm Randy Prudham, the Cub Master for PAC-44. Uh, we are the Kindergarteners through 5th graders. As scouting, we try, uh, we promote citizenship in the community. And we came here with, uh, wonderful help of Ms. Finch, our city administrator, and our city clerk here. Uh, we started learning about our city government here. And what it takes to be a good citizen in just, not even at home, but at, in our community. So, um, if any of the kids want to join me up here so they can see who we are, they're more than welcome. I know we have Max, Marie, Hillary, Odin, Eli, Paisley, Ethan, Garrett, and Oliver. I mean, we, like you said, we're the 5th gr- the Kindergarteners through 5th graders. And we really appreciate everything that we got to learn today. I know they had fun, I had fun. And hopefully, they learned a lot on what it takes to be a good citizen. So, thank you very much.
Could you, uh, introduce the other scout leaders, please?
Yes, we also have Gary Marslaw and Pat Guzman. And Robert Weber, he's not, uh, he didn't, must've came straight from work, like a lot of us do. So, uh, and those are some of our, the, some of our, uh, leaders. We have also that did not come, you know, other commitments, so.
Well, I, I thank the leaders for putting your time in. It's, you know, volunteer, and it takes a lot of dedication and a special person to do that. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have the DCDP presentation by Ronnie and Shirley. Thank you.
Um, thank you, honored, um, council members for having us here tonight. My name is Ronnie Badacharia. I am a resident of Ward 1 and a board member of DCDP. Shirley Iverson is the Executive Director of the Downtown Kirkston Development Partnership. And I'm here tonight to briefly review the walkability audit, um, study that we did in July and August of 2021. You should've all received a copy of the audit, um, report in your notes prior to the meeting. But, um, basically, I'll review the summary and, um, some follow-up conversations I had with Administrator Finch, and then also discuss some of the recommendations that came out of the report. To start off with, um, this study was undertaken to be a companion to, not a replacement of, the MINDOT study, just to clarify that. The corridors that we were looking at are Ash and Market Street. So, they're just outside the corridor that MINDOT, um, is working with the city on. And, um, both corridors, the basic recommendations were that, um, there could be aesthetic improvement to both of them, to enhance the walkability and add traffic calming elements to the, um, to the streets. And then another recommendation that was pretty strong in the finding, or in the, in the data collected during the report was that, um, ADA compliance at all four corners of each corridor intersection would be, um, preferable. So, they were accessible by members from all throughout the community, rather than just a few arterial, um, entryways, entry points into the downtown area. In a summary conversation with Administrator Finch, she explained to me, um, that the market area, Market Street area is actually owned by Burlington. So, um, that's Burlington Railroad. So, um, aesthetic modifications would be challenging to make to that, um, that particular street. Robert and Ash intersection will also be covered in the corridor study, as she mentioned to me. So, in kind of looking at the results that we had from our report, we would like to recommend that the, or, ask, I should say, not, not recommend, but ask, that, um, Ash Street between Robert and Houston be considered a possibility for aesthetic improvement with public art in a community gathering space on the eastern side of the corridor, which is partially owned by the city. And, um, this would connect also with the area along the downtown square. If and only, um, private property owners in that area would be agreeable to having some of their property enhanced across from the downtown square. There's also a goal sign, waypoint map, and, uh, that we're currently working on in the DCDP to put at the entrance of Central Park. And then, um, in kind of scoping out this project earlier on this spring, I did contact Eric Castle from UMC, who has a landscape design class at the university. And he said that he would be willing to work with the community to design, um, aesthetic improvements along this corridor if, um, the city would like to pursue that such a, such an opportunity. And, um, in closing, I have two pieces of public art that have been gifted by Studio 110 to be kind of used as inspirational pieces for, um, an art installation at Ash and Robert. And the first one is called Painful Thoughts by Monique Argularis. Painful Thoughts, these are painful thoughts about the border, about separation, about who has rights to citizenship. Over and over, we hear about the immigrant crisis and the people that do not belong. It makes me angry, and it makes me realize that there are many that would say, "I do not belong because of my race, because of my skin color, and because of my family bonds." I am a US citizen. But I wonder, when I will be told I no longer belong here, that my family does not belong here, that because of our skin, race, and race, that no Latinos belong here. These are painful thoughts. So, that's one perspective of newcomers that are coming into Kirkston right now. The second piece is by April Gomez in 2017 called Electrifying. "I hold the sun in my heart. It is a fire that cannot be put out. It gives me life. I am electricity. I am a shot of firepower. Energy is all I have to give. I am a firework that you stop and stare in awe of. But know this: you don't know how dangerous electricity can be. You don't know how much it would hurt if you messed with me." So, these are just two pieces that the DCDP wanted to put forward for the City Council to consider when they think about making Kirkston a more welcoming place for newcomers. And, um, the Studio 110 has said that these pieces could be used as inspirational pieces for a public art piece at that corner or at other places along the corridor. And that is the end of our presentation. So, thank you for your time, and I hope you have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Counsel, I will send out, I apologize, I, I didn't realize where I missed sending that out to you. So, I will send that walkability study out to you tomorrow that we received from DCDP, so you can see that report in its entirety.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, moving on. That brings us to the agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from tonight's consent agenda? Whoops, I'm sorry, regular agenda, pardon me. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Clayton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Don, thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Melby?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Breton?
Aye.
Okay, this brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from tonight's consent agenda? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Tom and?
Yeah. Joe, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Melby?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Breton?
Aye.
All right, moving on to public hearings. Ashley?
Yes, Your Honor. Item 7.01 is a public hearing on the project number 975, Hoven Lane to Radisson Road by street reconstruction. This project has an estimated cost of $375,428.25, with an amount to be assessed of $69,996. The recommended term on this assessment is 2 to 10 years at 3%, Your Honor.
Thank you. I'll open this public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council? If so, please come to the podium, state your first and last name and address, please. Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing.
Item 7.02 is a public hearing on project 976, Grant Street, North, Front to Widman Lane by street reconstruction. This pro- this project has an estimated cost of $160,428.81, with an amount to be assessed of $23,400. The recommended term on this assessment is 2 to 10 years at 3%, Your Honor.
Thank you. I'll open this public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council? If so, please come to the podium, state your first and last name and address, please. Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing.
Item 7.03 is a public hearing on project number 977, North Front Street, 6th Street to Sherman Street by Batumist Mill and Overlay. This project has an estimated cost of $344,620.6, with an amount to be assessed of $46,430. The recommended term on this assessment is 2 to 10 years at 3%, Your Honor.
Thank you. I'll open this public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council? Please come to the podium, state your first and last name and address, please. Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing.
Item 7.04 is a public hearing on project number 978, Riverside Avenue, Victoria Street to Summit Avenue by Batumist Mill and Overlay. This project has an estimated cost of $280, excuse me, $280,544.57, with an amount to be assessed of $43,306.5. The recommended term on this assessment is 2 to 10 years at 3%, Your Honor.
Thank you. I'll open this public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council? If so, please come to the podium, state your first and last name and address, please. Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing.
Item 7.05 is a public hearing on project number 979, Elm Street, 4th Street to Summit Avenue by Batumist Mill and Overlay. This project has an estimated cost of $236,839.10, with an amount to be assessed of $18,000, with the recommended term of this assessment to 2 to 10 years at 3%, Your Honor.
Thank you. I'll open this public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council? Please come to the podium, state your first and last name and address, please. Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing.
Item 7.06 is a public hearing on project 980, 4th Avenue North, North Broadway Street to Alexander Street by Batumist Mill and Overlay. This project has an estimated cost of $104,772.13, with an amount to be assessed of $27,973.64. The recommended term on this assessment is 2 to 10 years at 3%, Your Honor.
Thank you. I'll open this public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council? If so, please come to the podium, state your first and last name and address, please. Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing.
Item 7.07 is a public hearing on project number 981, 4th Avenue North, North Broadway, Broadway Street to Alexander Street by Batumist Mill and Overlay. This project has an estimated cost of $104,772.13, with an estimated amount of $27,973.64. The recommended term on this assessment is 2 to 10 years at 3%, Your Honor.
Thank you. I'll open this public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council? Please come to the podium, state your first and last name and address, please. Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing.
Item 7.08 is a public hearing on project number 982, 7th Avenue South, South Main Street to Marshall Street by Batumist Mill and Overlay. This project has an estimated cost of $67,048.13, with an amount to be assessed of $21,375. The recommended term on this assessment is 2 to 10 years at 3%, Your Honor.
Thank you. I'll open this public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council? Please come to the podium, state first and last name and address, please. Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing.
Item 7.09 is a public hearing on project number 983, South Broadway Bridge to South Main Street to Houston Avenue by Concrete Mill and Overlay. This project has an estimated cost of $643,529.21, Your Honor.
Okay, I'll open this public hearing. Anyone wish to address the council? Please come to the podium, state your first and last name, as well as your address, please. Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing.
Item 7.10 is a public hearing on the assessments for unpaid water and sewer charges for current services. The amount for the unpaid water and sewer charges is $5,833.57. The amount for code enforcements is $3,806.39. And the amount for mowing charges is $3,278.29. Each assessment is a one-year term, Your Honor.
Thank you. I'll open this public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council? Please come to the podium, state your first and last name and address, please. Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing.
Item 7.11 is a public hearing to authorize the abatement for Housing Incentive Program, Your Honor.
Thank you. I'll open this public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council? Please come to the podium, state your first and last name and address, please. Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing. Okay, I need a water break?
No, I'm good, I'll go.
Okay, this brings us to the regular agenda.
Item 8.01 is a resolution to approve adopting assessment on local street improvement project 975, Steven Drive, Hoven Lane to Radisson Road by street reconstruction, Your Honor.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you. Delane?
Second.
Second by Steve. Discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Melby?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Breton?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on.
Item 8.02 is a resolution to approve adopting assessment on local-funded street improvement project 976, Grant Street, North Front to Widman Lane by street reconstruction, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved. Motion, Your Honor.
Joe?
Yep.
And?
I'll second, Your Honor.
Clayton, thank you. Discussion?
Did all these street projects, did all the sod and everything get done on them?
Yep. Most of it.
Yeah, I believe so. I noticed today that they had the signs and stuff up.
Our city engineer says yes, and I did notice that the stop signs and such are, are also replaced.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Melby?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Breton?
Aye.
Item 8.03 is a resolution to approved adopting assessment on the federal-funded street improvement 977, North Front Street, 6th Street to Sherman Street by Batumist Mill and Overlay, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Tom?
Got Tom and Wayne? Discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Melby?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Breton?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item 8.04 is a resolution to approved adopting assessment on federal-funded street improvement 978, Riverside Avenue, Victoria Street to Summit Avenue by Batumist Mill and Overlay, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, Your Honor.
I have Don, thank you, second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Christie. Discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Melby?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Breton?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 8.05 is a resolution to approve adopting assessment on federal-funded street improvements 979, Elm Street, 4th Street to Summit Avenue by Batumist Mill and Overlay, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Clayton, second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Christie. Discuss, discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Melby?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Breton?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 8.06 is a resolution to approved adopting assessment for the federal-funded street improvement 980, 4th Avenue North, North Broadway Street to Alexander Street by Batumist Mill and Overlay, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you. Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Wayne, second, thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Melby?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Breton?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 8.07 is a resolution to approved adopting assessment on the federal-funded street improvements project 981, Central Avenue, North Ash Street to Albert Street by Batumist Mill and Overlay, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you. Don, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Joe, thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Melby?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Breton?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 8.08 is a resolution to approved adopting assessment on the local-funded street improvement 982, 7th Avenue South, South Main Street to Marshall Street by Batumist Mill and Overlay, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Christie. Is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Delane, thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Melby?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Breton?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 8.09 is a resolution to approve adopting assessment on federal-funded street improvement project 983, South Broadway Bridge, South Main Street to Houston Avenue by Concrete Mill and Overlay, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Clayton and Don, thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Melby?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Breton?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 8.10 is a resolution to approved adopting assessments for unpaid water and sewer charges for current services, Your Hon- Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Steve and Joe?
Yep.
Thank you. Discussion?
Is this getting any better? I mean, about the same? As far as numbers or fee-wise? Had to get, get you out, but. You know, we have this every year, but it's, just was wondering on how the basis is it going? Does it stay pretty steady here every year, or?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's pretty steady. I would have to look at exactly, but, you know, it's, it's, for the most part, half the houses are, the utilities that are getting assessed are reoccurring assessments. They don't pay all year. And, you know, a lot of them are just, you know, the services keep getting charged until the meter's pulled. It's still considered an active service, even if the water's shut off with the meters in place. So, a lot of these are houses that we can't get ahold of. They got a meter in the house, and they get a $200 assessment every year just for the minimum water bill. So, you know, like I said before, we, we try and stay on top of it. Lynn gets ahold of, if, if it's a rental, the landlords are notified whenever a delinquent bill is, is delinquent two months. So, um, like I said before, everybody should be well aware of the situation. Yep.
So, since this goes on their taxes, then does the county collect it and pay it back to us, then?
Yep.
Okay, do they, do they normally get them collected, or do they just keep piling up?
That's a good question.
We could, we'd have to, um, check on that. It would depend on if that person is, um, staying current on their taxes. So, if they're paying their, their tax bill, which includes the assessment, we'll get it back. If their taxes are delinquent, we, it, it will just sit there probably until, until those taxes are paid and continue to, um, be assessed if that's, if that, um, meter remains active.
That goes the same if it's a rental, the, that bill will go back to the owner of the rental?
Yep.
So they'll have to collect or whatever, which way they do.
Yep. And that's why we try and keep them informed on their renters so that if they move out on them, they can hopefully get it out of their deposit before the deposit's refunded. And you know, if, if a, if a, how, if somebody's not paying their taxes, the county's gonna end up with the property and then typically once it's purchased, it's, the new owner's responsible for any assessed. So in theory, we should get, we should get paid for all these assessments at some point. It might just take some time.
Has the county kind of gotten better on that during they sell, sell say tax forfeited land to collect the assessment? Cause otherwise they don't and then we come back here and want us to give them. And I mean, that's kind of.
The city attorney couldn't be here tonight, but I would have to do research on how the assessments, tax forfeited lands, I don't have an answer for that. The ones that we had that we'll see today are, I believe, all vacant lots. So we'd have to, we'd have to contact the county to see if that same process applies for those.
Cause that, to me, that should, the assessment price should be included in their selling price.
Well, I'm, I imagine that's dictated in, in some sort by state statute when you get into the tax forfeit. And I don't, I don't have that answer today, but I will ask our city attorney when he's back. He is with family this week for Thanksgiving, but I will check on that and get an email out to the council.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks, Brandon.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Can I roll call, please?
Melby? Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Cressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Bedbroughton?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight point one one is a resolution approving the, in authorizing the abatement for the housing incentive program, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, Your Honor.
Got Tom and Dawn. Discussion? Amy, you got a little brief on this one?
I'll just kind of do a recap from, so at our last meeting, we actually set the public hearing for this evening and then this is before you. These are three homes that have applied under the housing incentive program that we have as it sits today. That does expire at the end of this year, so we will be coming to you with, with a proposal for twenty twenty two and twenty twenty-three. We've historically done a two-year abatement, so that'll be coming forward to you. These three properties have been fully valued at the county and that information was provided to us kind of during our, our budget process. Council's approval on this resolution then allows us to report that back to the county so that these taxes can be abated on these properties once they're approved by this body.
This is twenty and twenty-one then? This was a two-year?
These were part of the two-year, yes. Yeah. And this one here, we just have, we do have the estimate on number one of your, of that resolution, an estimated about twenty-seven hundred dollars per year for two years on these properties of the city share, just to give you an idea on that.
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Can I roll call, please?
Melby?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Cressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Bedbroughton?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Item eight point one two is a resolution to approve the classification of non-conservation of the tax forfeit land located within the city of Crixton, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Who I got here? Delane and?
I'll second.
Clayton, thank you. Greg, you got a little update on this? Thank you.
According to Polk County and through state statutes, that basically tax forfeited land has to go through a classification of conservation or non-conservation. And basic conservation regards six typical usages and you have to reference present use of all parcels adjacent to that land that's being referenced, the potential productivity of the land soil, forests or vegetation growth on the land, accessibility of the land to establish roads, schools or other public services, and suitability or desirability of the land for particular uses, and suitability for forest resources. So basically six items for conservation, non-conservation. These lots are tax forfeited parcels or all previous city lots or city parcels for housing construction. So there should be no usage for conservation in terms of, within the city limits. There is references to the classification, whether it's tax for, or excuse me, whether it's, when it's tax forfeited to achieve the following goals. It's basically referencing efficient use of the property, reduce local and state government expenses, conserve and develop the state's natural resources, or encourage economic development. And in our terms, in the city's terms, it should be non-conservation because we want to develop that land within the city limits. So that's basically what I have for you today.
All right, thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Can I roll call, please?
Melby?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Cressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Bedbroughton?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight point one three is a resol- resolution authorizing the pool repairs and increasing budget, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make a motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Dawn, is there a second?
I'll second.
Christie? Amy?
Yes, I do have an update for you and just for members of the public and members of the audience, I want to provide a little recap. There was a, an issue discovered at our municipal pool with a corroded pipe that takes some of the waters down from the pool deck, down through the drain tiles and then down through the basement floor where the, the pipe was actually corroded from the section where it comes out of the floor in the basement down into the, down, going down into the basement floor, causing some sewer gases to come up. Really needed some immediate attention. We explored a few alternatives for repair. One of those included a more traditional maybe approach of getting access to the pipe, getting it out, putting a new one in. That one would have required disrupting that pool deck, jackhammering down through at that time, an unknown depth of cement, getting that pipe out, putting it back in, and then getting the cement put back and the tiles replaced. We had some concerns with that when you're jackhammering so close to the pool, not wanting to cause any disruption to the actual framework of the pool, cause any additional cracks. And so today, we did have RotoRooter come and they do a similar process and maybe corroded sewer pipes where a sock is inserted in and then hot water goes through, hardens the resonant lines, the inside of the pipe. This, they came today and thank you for your patience letting us get the resolution on for you today. We proposed you in the resolution up to thirty thousand. We were trying to get if, if all of the feet we were estimating would have had to be remedied. When they came today, it looks like about sixty-six feet of pipe, which will include four of the drain tiles. Two of them are actually on a different pipe, don't appear to be in the same condition as the main concern. Actually, the estimate came back today at fifteen thousand. So much less, we do have approximately eleven thousand in reserves in the pool. So there will be an additional few thousand dollars that we will likely need to pull from the park reserves, if not just directly from that budget. But that was a much lesser cost than we initially contemplated. They did go in today and had to clean out the pipe so they could get the cameras in and really get a good idea. They do believe that the pipe is a candidate for that type of a remedy. We think that's the safest way to go and the least amount of disruption there with our pool deck and then the cement.
Does it still require a shutdown of where you had talked about?
It does. Well, there's two pieces here. This, this particular resolution is addressing one issue. We have another issue going on. There is a leak and we, we did mention this at Park Board last week. There is a leak in the main valve and the Department of Health detected it and required that that be fixed by December thirty-first. The fix for that pipe does require the pool to be drained. So that is really what kind of triggered that pool closure there to allow that to be drained. We wanted to get both of the repairs done at the same time, get everything put back, refilled. It takes about three, maybe a little more days to drain the pool, get the repairs done with the two contractors should this be approved this evening, and then fill everything back up and get all of our, our chemical levels back right. And we anticipate reopening then by that December twenty-seventh date.
By putting a sock in there, how is, does it, how long does that last or, you know, I mean, is it something that's, is it a temporary fix or is it a fix?
Brandon can probably weigh in a little bit more than I can on this, but I don't believe it's a short-term fix, but I'll let him share some of his knowledge with us.
We got a plumber in the back too. He, Mr. Farmer?
I was gonna actually ask you what Tom just said. How long is it gonna last?
I'll let.
Is it an average or, you're gonna spend money doing it right?
Yep. So it, I was there briefly today, kind of assisting, but it, depending on the chemical makeup of the water, that's gonna be in contact with the pipe. They use a different resin. So essentially, when they're done, it's almost like they've created a PVC pipe on the inside of, of the, of the three-inch floor drain plumbing. So you know, the, the life expectancy of PVC is a thousand plus years. I don't know that I would say that a hundred percent confidently that this is a thousand-year pipe, but I'm pretty confident that it would be a longer life pipe than cast iron that was in there. So you know, RotoRooter sounded like they were asking all the right questions to make sure that they used the right, the right resin to, to do the repair. And it's, you know, they do this, we, we did this on the storm sewer underneath the railroad tracks by in between Crooks Club and M&amp;H. So you know, in, in places where you can't excavate, this is a, is a common practice. It's, you know, when you don't, it's, it's obviously expensive. You saw the fifteen, fifteen thousand dollar price tag, but not having to disturb anything to do the repair kind of offsets that expense.
I have a question, Amy.
Yes.
When they drain this pool and stuff, is that, is there a time that we need to maybe look at drains and stuff while the pool is drained? To have somebody inspect those or just to check them out to make sure that nothing else is gonna happen like this?
On the drains in the pool?
Yeah.
Um, we can check into that. I don't know if I can get someone. We are having right now two quotes developed for a facilities review that will propose to you the cost of having that done. And the, the pool is one of the facilities that we would like to have analyzed to understand the, the aging of some of the equipment, as well as the structure of the building. I would have to check and see on that. We'd probably have to get someone that's a certified pool inspector to do that. I can certainly check on that.
You know, running a camera through the piping or the drainage system to make sure that, you know, come down two years, three years down the road and we gotta do it all over again far as a different area. I was just thinking with the pool being drained, would it be worthwhile? And I guess if an estimate was done where they can shoot a camera down it or?
I will, I will check on that. I'll reach out to the two engineering firms that we've asked to prepare quotes for us and ask to get some feedback from them on that particular question. And then I'll get that information back to you.
Thank you.
And RotoRooter was gonna run the main sewer to just make sure, we, we don't even know what material it is. So we don't know if it's cast iron or clay. And when they're here to line that pipe, they were gonna run the, the main sewer too, just to make sure that that doesn't look like it's gonna need to, need some service too. So I know Jake was working on that.
Thank you, Brandon. Further discussion? Hearing none. Can I roll call, please?
Melby?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Cressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Bedbroughton?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight point one four is a resolu- resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, Your Honor.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Clayton, is there a second?
Second.
Christie?
Yep.
Okay, Amy, brief update or are you kind of?
Yep, I, I will give you a brief update here. These are some of the entries that we have been talking to about, written in conjunction and with our auditors. I know that I've gotten some pushback from this body about the amount of time it has taken, but these are not like making a transfer of a hundred dollars from your savings account to your checking account. There's, there's compliance issues. There's things that we have to understand what we're doing before we present to you that will come up again in our, in our audits and that we're responsible for. So what, you do have an attachment, but I'm gonna just give a high-level overview here. We have some funds, three fifty special assessment debt and three fifty-five Johnson Control that are some older funds that need to be closed out. That's been at the recommendation of our auditors for several years now. Just takes a little bit of work. You will see several entries involving those funds. We have some reclassified bonded funds in Fund two-two-seven, the improvement fund. And the improvement fund is where some of our street improvements are paid from, as well as where the sidewalk fee goes into and where some of our sidewalk repairs are, are paid from. And then the bottom portion of that is the airport deficit reserve transfers that need to be made. And if you look at that very bottom number, that it ended up being two-hundred ninety-nine dollars, nine hundred thirty-three dollars and five cents. So there was about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars that was reserved for airport improvements that we are going to use to offset that four-hundred thousand dollar deficit. But the rest of that will, is recommended as a general fund reserve transfer to shore that up. We've given some details for you at the bottom. Some of that was the city share of the fuel system. A journal entry was just never made from general fund into the airport fund, causing that reserve balance to go into the deficit. There's the city share of the pavement rehab. Those two together were about two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand. There's another amount, seventy-three thousand, five seventy-five, that are prior year adjustments. We could have spent much longer investigating that, but felt it was the feedback of this body, that the sooner you saw those, the better. And I'm not sure how much we would truly benefit to continue going, going back. It appears that transfers just hadn't been made for some of the city share of various airport projects. So that shores that up, that closes out that Fund three fifty and three fifty-five, and then reclassifies some of those bond funds in the improvement account. And as I said, these were written with the assistance of our auditors and had them review them as well before we prepared them for your agenda this evening.
Did you say that one of, one has some of the sidewalk money in it?
Not this journal entry. Fund two-two-seven does include, that is where our sidewalk fee money comes into, just into that fund, but that's not part of your adjustment you see here. That was just for explanation on that fund.
Does that actually draw from the reserves, the seventy-three thousand, that they didn't draw off reserves over the years? Is that what you're saying there or?
That's what it appeared, actually all of that, those three entries you see there. The first two, the city share of the fuel system, the city share of the pavement rehab should have been journal entries. If there wasn't money in the airport fund at the time and an entry just wasn't made to shift that from general fund into airport. So at the end of the year, the airport reserve balance was hit because that money was spent and coded appropriately to the airport fund, but that transfer was not made for the city share from the general fund.
So how, how far back did you go?
Um, Ryan, I might have to.
We looked as far back as what InCode would allow us.
Okay, so our Tyler InCode, part of it is working backwards, sometimes through what doesn't feel like necessarily complete records that are, are real easy to get to. And we could have worked a little longer on this, but it, it would have held up our ability to get this before you. These are input and ready to hit the button should this be approved, which will then allow us to run some reports and get that, those balances to you, and then begin our process of our monthly, of our monthly reports. We don't anticipate and while I'm here, we won't be doing this again. We will, I keep a spreadsheet now of when things are authorized to pay from general fund reserves or certain reserves so that we can, I can keep an eye on that. We're also talking about ways that we can go ahead and reflect those entries. Right now, we don't have a way to do that. So it's, I can run a trial balance and see a reserve, but I have to then go to a spreadsheet and kind of make sure I know what's been allocated from that. So we're working on some things with that. Part of that will be some exploration through our Tyler InCode system. We'll need to work with the auditors and make sure that all of our entries are appropriate, but we will not wait. If something is paid and needs that transfer done, we will make it at that time or in that period so that we have accurate balances.
I'm guessing that's why the reserves that we actually balanced the budget over the last couple of years were never really gone because they were coded wrong? Is that part of that, you think?
Um, I didn't hear the last part. I'm sorry.
The money that we've, we've used in years past to use the reserves to balance our budget, where this is actually, what was I saying? It went to, had to pull off the reserves with these numbers or we had to pull off the reserves with these numbers?
It still would have. These entries would have come from the same place, but should have been made at the time that the city share was allocated. We're even exploring some different ways to have our, some of our grant projects in a specific fund so we can track revenues in, expenses out, as well as the city share and where those are coming from. Just takes a little bit of time to investigate how to do that appropriately. But this, these would have impacted your general fund reserves at the time had they been made, where now they're just being proposed to do at this time to shore up that, that deficit reserve balance in the airport fund.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Can I roll call, please?
Melby?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Bedbroughton?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight point one five is a resolution approving payment for twenty twenty David Drown Associates, Your Honor.
Motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Don, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Christie. Amy?
Yes. Again, I have, I have emailed this to you, but for our, our public and members of our audience. This invoice was actually the invoice that was due for the city administrator executive search that was done in twenty twenty resulting in, in my hire in October. On our side, it was being routed to a former employee's email. And then on their side, I believe they were just preparing for some year-end cleanup of accounts and, and recognize that and were very gracious with us. The services have been provided. There's really, I don't...
So they, they emailed statements rather than mailed them?
At least on this one. There may have been a mailed copy in the beginning. I'm not sure about that. This one was finally, they realized that email address was no longer being monitored and it made its way to my inbox.
So that leads to a question. If this happens in the future with people leaving, is there something that prompts people to say this is no longer an active email or like you get that mailer demon or something?
Yes, we do a couple of things. One is we do put, we do put an out of office or a, a reply saying that that person is no longer at the city, those types of things. There's, in, in other cases, that person's email may be assigned to someone else, usually for a certain amount of time to make sure that you are changing contact information. So I think on both sides, both the city and with, with this firm kind of got lost a little bit, but the services were provided and it's my understanding, I think they actually went out and did two, two rounds of, of advertisements and searches and that, that covers both of those sessions.
We really didn't drop the ball on this payment. It was kinda...
I think it was a comedy of errors probably on both sides. Yeah, we weren't aware that, that it wasn't paid. I, I never had any reason to look at it. I assumed it was long done before I came or shortly after. So with transition of staff shortly after that point, I think that certainly contributed.
Where was it in expenses for twenty twenty? Did you find it as a?
I did not see that it was budgeted. We pulled the resolution. We did pull the resolution to see if it indicated where the funding source was and we were unable to find that.
Interesting.
So likely it would have, my assumption would be based on review of, of past budget items, I imagine it probably would have hit maybe the council approved budget, items in the council budget, which in the end will be impacting this same general fund.
I think that's what it would, if I remember right, it was coming out of the council's budget.
Yeah, that's what I would expect to see. Yeah, so and that is actually where we have it coded there now. So in the end, it will really have that same impact as if it was paid at that time.
So there are sufficient funds at this point?
Yes, yeah, there are.
Further discussion. There ain't none. Can I roll call, please?
Melby?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Bedbroughton?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on, I guess. Nice job, Ashley.
Yeah, that went way faster than I thought, actually.
You'd be saying bitimous in your sleep there.
Reports. Amy?
Yes, I just have one thing that I wanna talk about real briefly and that is last Monday or Tuesday, I can't remember the date. We had the Mendot Corridor Study Open House. We had a really wonderful turnout. It was here in Council Chambers, SRF, the consulting group that the staff recommended and council selected was here to put on a presentation. They had some boards that they had up and those will actually be on display over at our library. If anyone missed that or if you're at the library, take a look. I did lay some handouts over on the table. It's just a brief summary from SRF on the Mendot project. There is a link at the bottom to the, Mendot's website has a project site and I will be sharing that on our Facebook as well. On that site, there is a link to take a survey. We do have some paper surveys available. I think we have some up on the tables in the lobby at City Hall. They're encouraging survey updates. I believe that'll be open about another week. They were gonna leave that open for two weeks. And then there will be a recorded version available. SRF is preparing that and we will share that out as well if someone was unable to attend the presentation. So you can see that same information that was provided by the consulting group. We'll put it on our site. I believe Mendot will be sharing that on the project site as well.
People that took the paper survey with them, where do they drop that off at?
If you wanna drop that back off here at City Hall, Tina, myself, we are then scanning those to our SRF group, our consultants, and they are compiling the results on that. So we'll be happy to do that. We handed one out today. And then as we get those back, we're just scanning those to them so they can make it part of their record.
Amy, do you, do you think that maybe the survey could be left to open another week considering the holiday?
That's probably, that's probably fine. I'll, I will just ask Mendot. They are actually hosting that with SRF, but I don't think that would be a problem. I will, I will make that request.
I, I have looked at the website and it looks like people are commenting on the map, so that's exciting to see the...
The interactive map. I forgot about that. Yep, there's an interactive map. They did have paper maps on the table at the open house where you could take a marker and write if you have a concern or an idea or just a comment that you'd like to provide. I thank you for bringing that up. They're providing that as well if you wanna go on and I encourage everyone to check out, check out the project site. There's also a digital version of the, of the display boards, which is nice if you wanna check that out as well.
Yeah, it's a good point to leave it open. I mean, like I said, there's a lot of people that really didn't make it, but you know, they, people that live down there, work down there, do business down there definitely probably have better insights and hate to rush in there and miss a few good things from the community. So a good point for... Also, I'm Jerdy.
So, no, a few people that did, did the survey online. It's very easy to get into and it's pretty quick, so multiple choice kinda thing or...
Big thing for the city of Crookston. I mean, this is...
It is.
I would, I would encourage and I, and I'm doing this, like if there's different, like local meetings I'm going to, I'll just take surveys with me. So if you guys like with Rotary or whatever, if you guys are just meeting with random clubs in town, you know, getting the word out there doesn't hurt either. And I know like Amy will give us some surveys to do that. But like I have a PTO meeting tomorrow night and so I'm gonna hand it out there for the people that'll be there, but if there's any other clubs you're interested in, I think it's a good way to get the word out there.
I will also email you the link to that project site so that if you wanna forward that to someone, you don't have to maybe dig it up again. If you're involved in any groups where you have an email listing, I'll send that to you. So you're welcome to share that as well. And Your Honor, that is all I have.
Thank you, Amy. Well, Ryan, you're the closest to the mic. You wanna start?
Shake it over there. Anticipation. Just have a few things tonight. In fact, I will reiterate a little bit more on what Amy said. We've also talked about those emails and stuff and setting up something like accountspay@cityofcrookston dot and then, and that way then when you do have turnover in staff, we don't have to worry about that type of an issue happening. So we've talked about that and a couple of different things with our system with some of those journal entries, working with Brady Martz on their equity accounts and it's something that they want our system to take care of at the end of the year. Us not to be going in and doing journal entries that because that's a big no-no. So worked with Tracy in that and she did review all that stuff that's in your packet. Brady Martz also did complete the audit of our CARES grant dollars that we gave away and stuff and so that is done and I got that filed with the state, so that is complete. Also with the Mendot Corridor Study, had a meeting with them about our pay submittals to them and how we receive our reimbursement, so that'll take place. Last week, we had our initiation meeting with MIF. People from the state were here in the office and David Roney and we went out to New Flyer and had a tour, which was kind of interesting. Got to ride on the bus, so that was very good. Otherwise, that's all I got unless somebody asks a question.
Does that MIF thing, does that seem hard to do or is it fairly?
It's a lot of work and in fact now comes the part where the lot of the labor and the work will be on the city part of it because once the last signature is done on that, then the two-year timeframe starts that he has to maintain the records and he said he's gonna have thirty-five people. Well, then those pay records, we have to prove that every month he has not dropped below that number that he has maintained from that day for two years.
I think there's a program out here a few years back that they had, if they, they had to show how many people they're employing and stuff and if they lost them, they, they lost it.
Yep, yep.
It, it seems like it's a good tool for some of these businesses that wanna expand.
It is a very good tool, but it's a lot of work on their part also, all what has to be done. I know that it was a lot of work upfront with David and I know we were scrambling at the very end 'cause he had put it on hold and then wanted to go for BORG again with it, so, but it's a lot of work, but it's gonna be a great program for here for New Flyer and excited to see their expansion, how it's all coming together for the city.
Good. So the, um, what'd you say? There's like thirty-five employees or something they have to maintain?
Yes, that was part of his application. He was guaranteeing that it would be thirty-five more jobs he was creating in Crookston.
With the challenge of unemploy, um, finding people and if they go below that, what happens? I mean, if they can't find the people to fill the thirty-five, does it?
Then he's gonna have to let the state know right away and typically that has to come to us since we are the administrators of that. So then I would have to contact the state and say, hey, you know, this has happened, certain circumstances might have arisen. Then it gets relooked at by the board.
So during this process, there is a chance that they fall below the certain thresholds and it's, and it's done. All your work is for not, not, nothing? Is that correct?
Hopefully that doesn't happen, but that is a scenario that could be, but
Okay.
David is quite confident that his number was conservative and that he's hoping to do more than thirty-five and...
Okay. Oh, so they could be well above thirty-five. He probably just put a number and...
Yep, he was conservative with thirty-five. He felt that they could even do a lot more than that when they get all done with this expansion.
Thanks.
Cause the expansion is supposed to be done April twenty-second next year and if it's not by, not done by that date, then he has to put a request in with us, so we contact the state and have that date changed.
And that thirty-five, then is that just the number of people that are in that new expansion?
No, it's for the plant here in Crookston. But he also had to let us know the number that was in St. Cloud also.
Thanks, Ryan. Chad?
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, counsel. Just a few quick things to report tonight. Happy to say that we have a brand-new check scanner and check jogger installed in the water and sewer department. And Lynn was making very good use of that this morning, very efficient piece of equipment. We also took inventory of three brand-new Apple iPads and those will be installed at the CSC up at the arena. And I'll be working with Jake in the Park and Rec Department to get scorekeeping, hockey scorekeeping software installed on those units for the season.
Can I interject? That was, I believe, something that was mandated. I don't know if Jake's on still, but not something we just pursued, but something that we had to have in place because that's what the organization was using. So just wanted that.
Jake, if you wanted to unmute and comment there?
Yeah, before the season started, District sixteen was brought an app for games for scorekeepers. It's called Game Sheets. So District sixteen mandated this year that we, we try it out and, and use this app. So we did some purchases and what happened was District sixteen will be paying for the app fee this year. And, and my understanding about it is if next year and the years to follow, if we wanna continue, we'll have a fee to pay as well. So, but, yep, that's, that's all I got on that, so.
So basically, you're not using the paper score sheets anymore? Is that it?
At this, at this point, we are because our, you know, everything is taking a little bit longer to get, but that is where they wanna go away from, Judge, Honor, Your Honor. They, yeah, everything is electronic now, so they wanna, they wanna test this new app out this year. And, and we'll try it in District sixteen and yeah, you're correct, so.
Thank you. God, I'm glad I'm not riffing anymore.
Thank you, Jake. And then finally had a very good meeting with our managed service partner, Exogen Solutions. And it's a little early, but we've begun discussions for long-term managed service replacement of our networking equipment and our virtualization infrastructure. So effectively, the servers that we're using here at City Hall, that would be a twenty twenty-three replacement, but we're starting the discussions now. Thank you.
Thanks, Chad. Paul, you always never wanted to be first and I was gonna call on you, but you don't like being first.
And what's your point?
Well, why, a few weeks ago, I'm always first one.
Happy to be here right now, Your Honor. Just a couple of things. Really happy to report that Officer Lauren Edivold finished his field training and started on shift today. So this is good. And again, we want to thank the council very much for allowing us to order those two cars. The squad car, Darren ordered them last week, and the squad car ETA is March. So we're glad we got this order in now, or it really would have pushed things back quite a bit. So if we'd have waited another couple of months, we'd be sitting at probably, you know, April, May, June, somewhere around there. And that's it.
Thanks, Paul. Chief Rover here, yep.
Just a couple of things, Your Honor and counsel. December gets pretty busy for the fire department. We had a couple of big programs that we administered during December. One is the main one, the Toys for Tots program, which is really, really a citywide event that we have a lot of help from, obviously from citizens, city staff, fire department and businesses and everything else. So that, that'll all be starting. You'll hear a little bit more about that. You adopt a hydrant program. We're gonna get that going. You'll be hearing a lot more about that in the media here very soon. Hopefully, we won't need it. If we can keep the snow away, that'd even be better yet, but I don't know if that's gonna work. And I just wanna make a comment on, with heating season upon us now and houses are getting all tied up and buttoned up and stuff, I, I just can't stress enough how important it, important it is for people to make sure they got working carbon monoxide detectors. I personally think they're probably almost more important than smoke alarms. So it truly is the silent killer. So if you have any questions on smoke alarms or CO detectors, please call the fire hall. And like I say, I mean, pretty much everybody has smoke alarms in their homes, but you really, really, really have to make sure you have carbon monoxide detectors. So any questions on those, on issues, getting them or what have you, call the fire department. We'll help you out on that. Just last thing, I just wanna say happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thanks, Tim. Brandon, anything more to add? No, he's got his list.
So we're having issues with some streetlights on the East Robert Bridge area. Doug has done as much investigating as he can, so he's contacted the electrician to try and, one of the breakers keeps tripping, so one of the wires somewhere is shorting out. So we're aware of those six lights on the bridge that, they're on the bridge and then there's one across on South Ash there that's not working. Street guys started putting up the holiday decorations, so the lighting on the streetlights and then I believe they're putting banners up tomorrow. Me and Greg have been working with Jeff Evers on getting his sidewalk fixed out in front of the 40A building there, trying to get some plans drawn up and we're, we're still pushing for this fall, so. Snowfall. I know a few of you got some questions on why... Snowfall. I know a few of you got some questions on why, why I decided to not plow um for that snow, so. Um, it was just kind of a combination of uh a few different scenarios. The biggest was the warm weather that was coming after it. Um, the second was, you know, our, our plow crews are uh, three of them haven't even, hadn't even been in a plow truck yet, so. Um, Monday we did, we did send them out just to get them familiar with the plow, so that was useful. Um, and, you know, honestly, it was, it was close to the three-inch uh accumulation, you know? The total accumulation might have been slightly over, but that first snow that came on Friday all pretty much melted as it hit the ground, so. Um, Dave's been working on adjusting the route slightly to fit our new equipment a little bit better and talking to the guys and coming up with what they're, what they see fit as best for um some routes. So you might see a different truck or a, a grader on different routes this year. They're, you know, they're trying to keep the grader on the bigger, wider roads and the trucks on the narrower, more residential roads. Uh, I sent out clean-out notices, cleanup week notices this week. Just, there's about ten houses that have TVs or concrete that didn't qualify for cleanup, still sitting on the berm, so. Some houses even put stuff out a week after it was, after cleanup week, so. They've got notices and hopefully we don't have to pass any of those on to the PD. The water department, Classic Coatings, is starting to move some equipment in to get ready for the filter media uh or filter rehab job that's supposed to start. Their, their, Ian was planning on draining the first filter they're gonna work on, on uh Wednesday here and they're supposed to come after Thanksgiving and start, so. We had, uh, there was a grounding issue with the meter reading base station on the North Water Tower. They fixed that. So that should be ready to get certified now. Um, well, two failed out at our old well site. It's been about ten years since that was pulled, so. Ian did some investigating and figured out that the, either the wire going down the well or the motor's bad, so. Um, we're having our well LTPs come to pull it and figure out what's going on with that. That's all I got.
Alright, thanks. Thanks, Brandon. Greg, anything to add?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel. Did you may have noticed that I sent out a planning commission packet two weeks ago and basically there's a we kinda got into a bad situat- or a delayed situation, I guess is what I'd call it. We, I got the cart before the horse, sent out the packet and forgot the legal notice. So when I started backtracking and looking at the timeline for the six forfeited parcels that are, that Polk County needed to have uh confirmation of whether the city wanted us to approve them being forwarded to the, you know, for sale to the general public. We had to make a decision and backtracking from, from the date of when they needed that notification would not have happened without the planning commission approval then subsequent city council and then also a Polk County meeting that would need to approve that as well. So we just decided to drop that as far as being that on the planning commission agenda. There will be future lots available if the city council is uh wanting to do that in the future, so just so you're aware of that. It was not a, there was no city council direction at this time anyway, so I, I just wanted you to be aware of why that happened. Uh, I did do a facility tour today with SEH and we have another one in the future that has not been s- uh scheduled yet, but it is upcoming before the, I would say mid-December or so, so that's my two items.
Alright, thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Uh, Jake still with us?
Yep. Hello, everyone. Uh, sorry, I can't attend tonight. Uh, I've been stuck at home with some kiddos that have, on quarantine, so. Um, I've been dealing with a lot of the pool issues that we've been having, um, going back and forth with uh, with Amy and, and Brandon. Um, so I, I'm glad that we are on the path that we are now to get things fixed there. Um, our Parks and Rec crew, they have been uh prepping and getting ready for, for winter and then they, they are done with um, with the outdoor rinks. The outdoor rinks are put up and uh we're just waiting for cold weather now to, to start flooding. Um, other than that, just been working with, at the CSC, with the pool and, and just moving forward with things in the wintertime and and gonna start planning for spring and summer um activities here, um, just in the next few weeks, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Jake?
Yep.
Would you share um the location of the, the rinks like you shared at um, at Park Board, just for anyone that's listening, please?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
So we, we have decided um this year to put one outdoor rink at Carmen Park. Um, and then, and then we decided to use the, the horseshoe um court that we have out at uh, at Highland Complex. Um, we, we, I, I talked with Scott Butts. Um, I brought the idea to him a couple of weeks ago and I thought it's, it's a fencing area, it has lights, there's parking, we have a heated facility with bathrooms and water. Um, and, and we made, they, they made a rink. We, we have some um, some older boards that we furnished up and, and used. Um, and, and everything's looking good out there, so um it's a, about forty, forty to forty-five feet wide and eight uh eighty to eighty-five feet long. Um, so it's a little bit bigger of an outdoor rink than, than Carmen, but um it's a good location too, so.
But Jake, does that, does that have, uh, the, the facility will be open pretty much evenings or how is that gonna work with the?
Yeah, we'll open it up um during the day and I, I haven't quite figured out what time to close at, um, but I'm, I'm pushing more towards that probably nine o'clock um time and, and I'll have staff, um. I'll schedule staff to come in and, and shut lights off and close the facility um at certain times and then myself or Scott or um our full times can open it up um in the mornings when they get to work. Um, and it's a, it's a heated facility. Um, they keep, Scott was telling me that in the past years, they keep it at that like sixty-one, sixty-two degree mark, um, so. It's got electricity, it's got everything. If people want to go there and use it, uh, you know, if they want like have a little potluck for a day and go spend the time at the ice or the rink all day. Um, you know, it's just a good area and we'll, we'll try it out this year and I'm thinking it's gonna go really well, so.
Okay, thanks, Jake.
Yep, you're welcome.
Robert.
Mayor, members of the council, please lower your expectations. Um, I have by now finished talking with all four of the banks. Uh, banks are very important to economic development. It, it's very hard to do uh economic development without their uh help and teamwork and I went and asked all of them for their support, uh, which they uh promised to give. Uh, no money, but support. I went spoke to the Lions Club and not a finer group of people are there in the world. Uh, we had a great conversation, it was a lot of fun. They were upbeat, they were engaged, uh, and that's a good thing. Also spoke to downtown uh community development partnership. They were each and every one very disappointed, but that's okay, that's a good thing too. Um, I, I've been meeting with um folks out of the University of Minnesota Crookston. Uh, we need to, at least I need to establish a good relationship with those folks out there. I met with a couple of different offices and I'll continue going back until I hit all the ones that, that uh, that, that we probably need. Uh, we need to be working with the alumni group, we need to be working with outreach group. There, there are several folks out there, obviously the economic development offices out there. Uh, we, we need to be working with them. They have resources and they have connections and, and they, they, that university is very important to Crookston. Um, I was allowed to go on some section eight inspections. Uh, that was educational and a great way to see the community through different set of eyes. Uh, I was with Ryan at New Flyer. Thank you, Ryan, for the invitation. Yeah, we got to ride a bus, said no kid who ever had to ride a bus. Um, and the last thing I'll tell you, uh, there are a great number of plans and studies that have been done. And I have five or six of them either on my desk or on my computer. There are some very good things back in that history, uh, whether it be the housing study, the downtown study, the walkability study that just came out. I'm looking forward to the corridor study coming out in the spring. Uh, but even the city councils over the years have produced documents that talk about vision for the future, action plans, things of that nature. And I, I, I think there may be a few flakes of gold uh back there in those studies that we can use and, and bring forward to, to date. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert. Rich, anything from WSN?
Justiceful mind. Happy Thanksgiving.
Alright, thank you. Okay, council, we'll start with uh Wayne.
Okay, Aaron got it off mute.
Lo- love the backdrop.
Things positive, right? Coming back this week, I'll try and bring some warmer weather with. And I like Brandon's idea about still getting stuff done this fall. But uh, I have, other than that, no report.
Alright, thanks, Wayne. Christie.
Um, so we had uh the park board meeting and as uh, uh Jake had mentioned, they decided on the rinks and that made some residents who were a little concerned about the Alexander uh space very happy. And he returned thirty-two pucks, I believe, that he had collected over the past couple of years in his yard um to utilize for other um park related opportunities. Um, and then we, I think uh an extension was approved for fifty-fifty funding with the DCDP. Um, and we talked about the swimming pool um and some of the issues there. And then also we talked over a little bit about the naming policy, um, that is now in place and they thought it was a good idea to actually have a um, an organized way of going forward with naming things. So um, there was some good um positive uh reaction there. I met with the DCDP as well and we had the opportunity to meet with Robert and that was um, I think, a really good opportunity to kinda talk about some of the things that Robert had mentioned about the studies that we've been doing or have been done and actually utilizing some of those and being more strategic about the planning process for the city in the future. Um, so I thought that was a, a really good thing and I'm excited to see what comes out of that. Um, I also want to thank the DCDP and Shirley and Ronnie to, for doing the walkability study and I really hope that we can implement some of their suggestions because they talked not only about the aesthetic piece, but also about the safety piece and so there was some um really eye-opening pieces in that study. So once the council has an opportunity to read through that, um, I'm sure that Shirley would be happy to answer any of those questions for you. But I'd like to see um the DCDP and, and the information that you provided in that report also go into the study that we have for the, the quarter study, so. Um, and, you know, as far as the, the artwork and things of that nature, maybe hopefully that's something that comes down the pike for some funding for improvements in parks and, and things of that nature, so. Um, thanks again for doing that. I, I don't know if we had an opportunity to ask questions and I don't know if anybody had questions about the walkability study.
I, I did have one and I apologize if I missed this, but what group did the study? I may have just missed that somewhere.
DCDP, so just that Crookston Development Partnership. We applied for a grant through AARP and utilized their survey tool.
Okay.
And then as far as the group, it was about a dozen people that volunteered.
Okay, thank you.
And they were community people beyond our group, so various ages. We had um members of the Golden Link involved, uh, university, uh, abroad, cross-section.
Um, and other than that, um, I think that pretty much, was there anything that I missed as far as the DCDP meeting? No. Um, other than that, yeah, I think, I think that's it. Lots of great things coming down, so excited about that.
Thanks, Christie.
Yeah.
Steve.
Um, happy Thanksgiving and uh Small Business Saturday is coming up. Uh, actually I'm looking at what the chamber has put online there. I mean, the number of small businesses that, you know, not everybody hears about every day are hidden within other city businesses, so I kudos those businesses that are taking in these sub-businesses, so to speak, or whatever, for, through the holidays or whatever, but I can't stress enough to uh support Crookston Small Business Saturday because they need it. That's all I got, Your Honor.
Thanks, Steve. Clayton?
I attended the Law Board on Thursday and just to make aware the council and mayor that uh Gary Willhite was nominated uh president of the Law Board and I was named vice president of the Law Board.
Oh, congratulations.
You're a well-representative.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clayton. Don?
Thanks, Steve, for making that announcement for the chamber, small business. We should encourage all of our people in the bed, in the room here to go shopping for the small businesses. Businesses in support are small businesses in Crookston and the chamber is sponsoring that activity, so. Um, thanks to everyone else. Have a happy Thanksgiving and uh thank you, Shirley, for uh you and Ronnie for giving that report from downtown. That's very important because we do have a, a large survey for downtown that we're gonna be looking at here in the next few months and so forth, so we'll have two studies.
I'd just say that um Shop Small Saturday is a collaboration between the chamber and DCDP.
DC, alright.
Um, we've had numerous meetings, um recruiting, pop-up shops to be in the businesses like Steve talked about. We were organizing the sip-and-shop idea of, you know, cocoa and cider, um, and sort of moving throughout the town. And you'll be surprised where vendors are popping up, like dudes, you know, not a place that you think of maybe shopping for your Christmas presents, but a great place to stop on Saturday, so. I just have to put a plug in for DCDP because we all worked really hard on that.
I bet. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Joe?
No report, Your Honor.
Dwayne?
So this week I signed up for that dashboard for the water to view your water. That's a pretty cool app. If you guys haven't had a chance, you can set parameters in case you're gone and you have leaks in your pipes and stuff like that, you'll get alerts. So I think that's a pretty cool. Who, who set that up as that?
I think we're gonna have to credit Mr. Carlson over there and his staff. Jump on back up there.
So the, I'll call it an app, uh, you know, there's, we receive uh meter readings every four hours on, for our water, new water meter infrastructure, so. Um, it all comes into the automated meter reading system and then, like Dwayne said, you uh can set your own thresholds and um, you know, if you're, if you're typically using a hundred and fifty gallons a day and you use a hundred and fifty-one, it'll send you a text message saying you're above your normal consumption. Um, there's also vacation alert on there, so if you know you're gonna be gone, you can activate that and if there's five gallons or more, whatever you set your threshold to, it'll send you a text in Jamaica or wherever you're at, so. Um, it, it's really useful. It'll, it'll help you catch a, a toilet leak or your neighbor watering their garden in the middle of the night. Lynn, Lynn did a lot of work on that. Uh, she put her own mailings together, um, sent out a notification kind of explaining how to sign up and she did that all on her own, so.
So yeah, you can pay your water bill on there also.
Yep, it sends you, it's, it sends you to our GovPay website that was set up. It's, it's, it's sending you to the, that, that was already in place, but yeah, that's part of it too. You can, you can pay your water bill on there and um it's, it's pretty cool.
Alright, thanks, Brandon. Anything else, Dwayne?
Nope, that's all I had.
Thank you. Tom?
Just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Um, once again, I want to thank Cub Scouts for being here. Bet they couldn't hang around. Lots of noise, fun noise, but. Uh, Ronnie and Shirley, thank you. So, uh, question for council, everybody gonna make it to twenty-ninth?
Next Monday.
Yes.
Yes.
So we're doing it at six, is that my understanding? Let's say six o'clock. Let's say six o'clock.
I think that's what you had on there.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Yeah, it is six o'clock.
Just Jackie and I was just kind of hearing some rumors. There's possibly a couple of council members that couldn't make it, so, but it's great.
Dale, if, if somebody does call in, I mean, I feel like this should be something that we're all addressing since we all made the, did the survey. So would we cancel and reschedule so everyone can be here?
I think if, I would like to do that. If someone can't make it, I do want to reschedule. I think it's very important that all council members attend this evaluation, so.
I do want to, in case there are people wondering what we may be talking about, um, we haven't put notice out yet because we were waiting for confirmation of attendance. But there will be media notice about a special meeting for the city council to conduct, uh, the city administrator's evaluation. So that's what that meeting will be about, and notice will be, um, put out likely tomorrow.
So, and also, I'd like to, uh, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And if you're leaving the great city of Crookston safe and happy trails and, um, nothing else come before counsel, we are adjourned. Thank you.